Thank you. I'm out of breath.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank everyone for being here. Good afternoon, citizens as well. Thank you for being present. We'll call this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. Would you please do roll call?
Mayor Roddell.
Here.
Mayor Proton Perry. Councilmember Caffey. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveras.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Milton.
Here. Please stand and join me for the pledge. Follow my application.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for remaining standing. It's my honor to deliver the prayer tonight for this council meeting as well. Following the prayer, an Irish blessing. And I want to thank Councilmember Milton for preparing this for me. Bow your heads with me, please. Dear Lord, thank you for the Rockdale community. We ask that we be guided in your wisdom and knowledge with respect and fairness for all as we deliberate here this evening. We thank you for our first responders, Lord, our educators, and all who work to make the world a better place. To this, we add an Irish blessing to all who live, work, and serve in our community. May the road rise to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sunshine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. Citizens Communications, do we have anyone signed up? So these citizens communications, there's three on this list, not only agenda, so we will proceed with these citizens communications at this time. I will call you by order that you signed up. If you would, once I call your name, please approach the mic, speak into the microphone. I will remind you that items not referenced on the agenda, the council can only listen, they cannot respond to your citizens communications. You'll be given three minutes. Once your three minutes is up, you'll hear a timer go off over here, so I appreciate if you would abide by that three-minute rule. So first is Jenna Redding.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. My name is Jenna Redding, and I'm a proud resident of Rockdale, speaking on behalf of many concerned citizens. Tonight, I'm asking you to appoint a chief of police that will take care of our citizens. We're worried about the current chief's health, shaken by Officer Wallace's recent actions, and frustrated by ongoing police harassment that's gone unaddressed. I've had numerous citizens reach out to me in concern of how serious this is, and that's why I'm here today. First, let's talk about our chief. We respect the years of service, but their health has declined and affected their leadership. A police department, especially one with just eleven officers, needs a chief who is fully capable of being there, day in and day out, to guide the team and keep us safe. Lately, we've seen gaps, oversights, slips, and slow responses. We need a chief who believes we're ready, can step in and bring the steady hand we need right now. The police, then there's Officer Wall we've heard about earlier this March. He broke multiple policies during its traffic stop. Chief meters fired him by March fourth after an investigation, and we're glad for that. But that's not just one bad apple. That incident caught on video spread across town showed a deeper problem, officers acting without enough accountability. This left us feeling unsafe, wondering who's watching the watchman. A strong chief could have stopped this before it even blew up. Worst of all, we've got citizens, myself included, complaining about harassment, routine stops, turning into intimidation. Neighbors in the East Ward and West Ward and those south of the tracks feeling targeted, and nothing seems to change. We filed complaints, written them, called them in, but where's the follow-through? It's eroding trust. We're not asking for much, just a police force that serves us, not scares us. A good chief would have backbone to fix this, crack down, behead bad behavior, and listen to us for once. Time's short, so I'll wrap this up. Our chief's health, Officer Wall, Pointe's past mess, and unchecked harassment, they're all signs that we need to change now. I'm currently waiting for city records for the past ten years of all that we have mentioned, but once I get that info and more resident input, I'll come back with somewhat internally with integrity that people will nominate as our new chief. That's it.
Thank you. Amanda Aldama.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilmembers, staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Amanda Aldama. I grew up here in Rockdale. I've spent majority of my adult life here as well. And the information I would like to share goes back to around April of 2010, to current. I was a victim of a crime in which I had a card stolen from me. I was six years in my career as a mobile RN for Home Health Services. My strange husband at the time became homeless and was in my home temporarily due to this. We were both told we needed to go to the PD and make statements. He made his first, and when I went back, Mr. Steven Goodrich walked in the room, teary-eyed, and said, "I'm sorry, I couldn't stop them." I'd say fifteen to twenty male officers with JD Newlin threw my ex-husband's statement on the table, which was covered up. He insisted that I sign it without reading it, when I refused. Every officer there put their faces two inches from mine, yelling and screaming at me to sign it. I was even threatened with jail and my children. I refused to sign it until Goodrich told them there was no need in all that, just to let me read it. I was unaware of any part if that statement was true. I asked him to make my own statement. I was refused. I was forced under distress to sign another person's statement, and my eight-year-old daughter, eighteen-month-old son, four-month-old daughter were taken from me by three o'clock that day. Because of this, I lost my home, my RN license, within that week as well. Those first eight months were a blur. Still, I didn't make the best choices during that time. Around June, I put myself in two different rehabs, and I thought like hell to get most of what was taken from me back in 2012. Me and my current husband had another child, adopted his two grandchildren through CPS. Life was pretty good with no major issues, until I stopped helping PD with my half-sister who had major health issues, or mental health issues, and my health was declining, and my children needed me more than running to PD's aid every time she had an episode. In 11 of 19, my children were removed from my home forcibly while eating supper by CPS investigator with no papers or officer. Bottom line, she kidnapped my children with no need for emergency removal. The abundance officer told me to file charges with the PD for kidnapping. Officer Ford came, took my statement, returned stating that he was told to stand down or look for a job by the end of that afternoon, because it was a CPS situation and for him not to get involved. He definitely didn't agree, but was stuck by orders by the chief and the captain. Nothing was done to this woman for breaking in my home, being caught by dropping other family's form on my floor with her signature on it. My daughter's hand and foot were broken by this woman during transport as well. Had PD stepped in, instead of turning their backs on my children, they could have saved her, along with my oldest coming back addicted to drugs at thirteen. Two of my daughters coming home with emotional disorders, one's a cutter, one's a fighter. My youngest son was sexually assaulted, came home with chronic severe intestinal issues and sexually transmitted words covering his body.
Ms. Aldama, I'll give you one minute to wrap up, please.
Okay. Yes, this case was dismissed for wrongful removal, and yes, this investigator is serving time with help from other PDs and county law enforcements, not ours. I've been assaulted by two people in my home. I was, I had charges pressed on me for the assault, even though the cane busted holes in my walls. I'm on a cane, I'm on mobility devices, I can barely stand on my own, but yet I was supposed to have assaulted a minor child, and Officer Wallace is the one that did that paperwork. Pointe has, and I do not agree with him getting the canine for this reason, Pointe, two of my children, fifteen years old, two girls, he has taken and body slammed to the road on their stomach. One had received broken and bruised ribs from him. The other one was thrown so forcefully to the ground that she had foam coming out of her mouth from stomach acid because of the force that he used. He did not use the state mandated restraints, especially not for a minor. And giving him a canine is going to open this county, this city up for a whole world of hurt.
Ms. Aldama, I've given you your extra minute, ma'am. I understand the energy and the emotion around your comments, and I appreciate you being here to speak to us in front of council, but I am going to have to ask you to cease at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ishrat? I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the last name. I apologize. Hussein, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Ishrat Hussein. I'm a Rockdale citizen. We have a business. We live here almost six years, and we have a couple, like three businesses here, and we live here, we have a house. So we're here for the, we have a little sign issue, that's why we're here. We almost spend, we bring the crunchy chicken business in the town, and we spend like thirteen thousand on that sign, but we not get the permit because we have a contractor from the Houston, so we have agreement, he gonna pull the permit on the, for the sign. So there is, you know, we was not sure, means that the sign was basically is on the awning, but there is, I'm requesting, you know, everybody, we try to, you know, bring the business here. So give us, you know, because that is, because being told us is on the roof, but I think this maybe a little bit is on the roof of most of, sign of the, on the awning. So that's why we are here, so we want to, you decide how we can go forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, council, that is an item on tonight's agenda. Go to our presentations. Richard Parish is here to give a presentation from the Rockdale Girl Softball Association. Welcome, Richard.
Thanks, sir. I got three minutes.
Sir?
I got three minutes.
You're not doing, you're an agenda item, so you have longer than that.
Okay, thank you, guys. Mayor, City Council, if these guys don't know me, I am Richard Parish. I'm president of Rockdale Girl Softball here in town, and every time we come to this city hall, I know Timothy is excited about seeing this because we're always looking for money. But I did want to thank you guys. We have, over the last couple of years, we've done about $120,000 worth of restoration fixtures, new stuff out there. I sent some pictures to you guys and our budgets as well, but we spent about $110,000, $111,000 the last couple of years upgrading that facility out there, which belongs to the city of Rockdale. We've got some new safety netting. Mayor, he's, kid's been out there playing ball for years, and I saw him out there the other night. I actually coached his granddaughter this year, which is awesome, seeing him back out there. But I just want to thank you guys. It's the businesses in town. I have a whole list of sponsors that I really believe that if I don't thank them, you know, it's a long list of sponsors. We have team sponsors, we have banner sponsors. We have a new business in town. You guys may have heard of USA Technologies. He sponsored the entire field for us, you know, over $33,000 worth of project. And I had some more pictures, but they just finished today, and so I'll get you some more pictures out there. But I want to read off our sponsors. AKC Welding and Cattle, the ranch right here in town, Napa Auto Parts, Rockdale Ford, Rockdale Building Material. Greg Brinkley's been sponsoring for over thirty years out there. I mean, forever. We have a new one out of Hutto. He's also a coach, a board member. UPS Shipping out of Hutto, the Rockdale Federal Credit Union's been sponsoring for a long time, Rollo Insurance, Classic Bank. We have a new one this year, Cameron Beer Company out of Cameron, delayed also coaching out there. Texas Electric, Mr. Tim Story, Alva One Chevrolet, Miller Starnes beforehand, been sponsoring for over thirty years. Thank those guys. Mr. Jimmy's over at Midway Grocery, been a sponsor for a long time. And once again, USA Technologies, KRT Radio, Attorney of Texas Title, Jim and I, Pan Beauty Shop, Climate Control, Rockdale Speedy Louvre, DNS Services, Magic Firearms, Friendship Painting, USA Technologies, again, Land Construction, Brazos Pizza Hut, Pruitt Insurance, been around for about thirty years, Texas Propane a long time, Ashley Bates Real Estate, Texas Burger Subway, Tiger Painting, Zapatas Electric, Citizen National Bank, and Rockdale State Rehab Rehabilitation. Without guys like that, it's my business in town. I don't even live in this town, but this is, this is my town. You know, I've been away from here for about seventeen years, I live in Lexington, but I've been involved in Rockdale softball for about twenty-eight years. I started as a parent, and you guys know Lee Jenkins, he was my daughter's coach twenty-eight years ago. And I was just a parent, you know, worked a lot, and I didn't really understand what it was about. So, you know, I was one of those parents that you don't like to be coaching their kid, to be honest. You know, I didn't like it. So I love Lee Jenkins to death, by the way. But, so I got involved, you know, I got involved. I became a coach, and I got to understand it. Then, you know, I became an umpire, then became a board member, and now I'm Associate Director on the State Board of Texas Teenage. So I'm very involved, and you guys know Helen. Helen's probably been everywhere in your doors, banging on it, wanting to, some kind of green currency or a check or something, you know. But I just want to thank you guys, you know, in this town for supporting Rockdale Girl Softball. We have thirty-one teams of just girls playing out there this year, and it's about three hundred and sixty kids. They're from Lexington, Milano, Caldwell, and Thorneville, and of course, Rockdale. But we have a lot of projects going right now. You see some of the pictures. We just rebuilt two entire fields that were probably forty years old. I mean, there's some, Mayor, he was out there, and I think when Alco was present, they did a lot of funding for us, and everything went really, really well. But we lose that funding, you know, we have to look elsewhere, and we look to the people in this room right here, you know, that do it for us. And I just really want to come and let you know what we're about. We do have a fundraiser this Saturday at the ranch. There's a really good band out there, and it's for these girls, their ages three to fifteen. So if you want to watch some softball, we do have our opening ceremonies Saturday starting at nine o'clock. And I do have one more thing. We lost an umpire last year, Mr. Jerry Cruz Senior. If you guys knew Jerry Cruz, he was a good friend of mine. He was the first family I met when we moved to Rockdale ninety-three, and he was umpire coach, he coached his granddaughter, coached his daughter. Just a great person, man. He cared about it, and we're also doing, gonna honor him and his family out there Saturday. So if you got time to come out there, we do appreciate it. If you have any questions, want to buy some raffle tickets, you know, we got them. We're giving away a pretty nice machine this year, Ranger. So if you have any questions, my name's Aldama, everybody knows Helen, you know, but thank y'all again for everything.
Richard, what time are opening ceremonies?
We open, we play games starting at nine o'clock, and ceremony starts at noon. We're gonna have a prayer and pledge allegiance, and then we're gonna introduce all our teams, and then we'll have, honor Jerry Cruz.
We have any state tournaments coming this year?
No, we didn't. That was one thing I didn't want to talk about. We offered, I tried, but you know, I went and did a survey of all hotels in town, and you know, there's a lot of hotels, but I don't think they can, they can accommodate twenty-two teams, you know, coming to this town. Lot of restaurants, but you know, not a lot of things to do in Rockdale. I mean, I'm sorry to say, it's just the way it is. And as Associate Director, all I can do is cry and complain and pitch it to them, but they get the end of the vote. But I do have a State Director on my side who pitched our vote, but we'll get one, you know, it's been two years. We will host a district tournament in June, and it'll be about twelve to fourteen teams, and I pretty much get what I want, so it'll probably be a younger, you know, six-year or eight-year. So I tried, it's just hard. With these new fields, we're gonna try, I thought the mayor the other day come out, and we're gonna try to host some tournaments. I think Tim, we talked about it, some, you know, select tournament, that's where it's at, man. Everybody's doing select ball. I mean, Texas teenage, it's a program that's been around for seventy-six years, and it's about the kids that don't get a chance to do it, you know, ain't got the money to go out and, you know, it's eighty dollars to sign up for our league every year, and we try to keep it that way. You go to Temple, Baskerop, it's a hundred and sixty dollars a kid, and I don't, you know, we want to, you know, it's a small town, man, and it's competitive. Mayor and I, we coached together years ago, won a couple of state championships, but it's gotten very competitive, and it's watered down in the select side of it, you know. My kid plays select ball, or, you know, it's out there, but you know, it's about the kids that don't get the opportunity to go, maybe a little, not so talented, but has a great heart. I take a kid with a great heart all day long, you know. Any more questions, anything?
Counsel, I think, Mr. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, man. I know you guys are at bat for us, and we're trying to...
What's it cost to play select?
Sir?
What's it cost to play on a select team?
Oh, it depends on the team. It could be four or five hundred dollars a month. Then you gotta, then you gotta pay for their hitting lessons, and if you're a pitcher, my god, it's crazy, you know, you're paying for a pitching lesson. And a lot of those teams, the Round Rock Blazers, they have ninety-seven teams in three states. You know, Davey Slim's the guy that owned it, and my kid played for him twenty years ago, you know, and it's just, it's a money pit, man, and there's so many kids playing it, and you know, you can be a...
Richard, I think I can safely speak on behalf of council that we sincerely appreciate the work that y'all do out there, giving our families and our children those opportunities, and even more so, we're thankful that we can find the money in our budget to help support that cause. So thank you for being here.
Well, I'll be here again. I'll be asking again. We do have, I did have a guy call me, a friend might call me, there's a unanimous, anonymous sponsor that supposedly has come up to some money, and he's asked my buddy where it's to go, and he shouldn't have called me, because I sure as heck told him where it needs to go.
Very good.
Anyway, but hey, one thing, not softball, baseball field, those guys need some help out there, you know. They do, they had some light poles fall the other day, that big storm, and so I went out there to try to help them, but they, they may need some help. I don't know where he's at right now, Johnny Hill, but you know, if y'all can find your heart, help those guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
But it's about your, you touched on the hotels. Of all the hotels, we know how many hotels we have. Are you comfortable saying how many of those hotels you're comfortable recommending to visitors from out of town to stay at?
You turn the camera off. You know, I went into, I went into, wanted to do a survey, and there's seventeen rooms that aren't available because they're broken down. So, I mean, that sends me a message, and I'm not too picky, man. I've slept in some, you know, you ever been to Port of Connor, Texas?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, unless you got a camper, you're gonna sleep in one of those. And, and I don't mind, and I'm not bashing, I'm not here to bash anybody, you know, they do what they can, I understand that. They help us out with, you know, stuff, but it's just not, you know, there's just, you know, there's not a movie theater. There's K-theater, they show some great movies. I talked to the guy the other day, I went to the Rotary Meeting, and you know, there's just not a whole, everybody's gonna go to Round Rock, they're gonna go to Kalahari, they're gonna go do something, they're gonna go to Baskerop for the movie theater. I mean, this town should be growing. I mean, our numbers, our Rockdale Girl Softball numbers are down from ages eleven to fifteen by thirty kids. There's thirty kids that played last year that could play this year that didn't, and that's just girls. What are they doing? You know, where are they at? I mean, I, you know, and I'm a, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, and I know that it's not safe out there. You know, these days, you know, it's not just Rockdale, it's everywhere you go. But that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Counsel, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are seven items on the consent agenda. I'll give you the opportunity, if there's any questions or comments that you'd like to discuss prior to asking for action on the consent agenda. No question or comments, I'll entertain any action on the consent agenda as written.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
The motion is second on the floor to approve the consent agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Being known will vote on said motion, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda, item eight, consider taking any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance canceling a portion of the May third, 2025 general election for the office of Mayor at Large and Councilmember East Ward, declaring unopposed candidates to be elected and providing an open meeting clause for other matters. Tim, is there anything you wanted to speak to on this, sir?
No, this is just kind of standard routine, and this is a first reading, so the second reading will probably be in consent.
So the Mayor Large seat is unopposed, and East Ward Councilmember Relais Oliveras is unopposed as well. So those are the two seats that we're discussing tonight. Counsel, I'll entertain any action on the first reading.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance canceling the unopposed portions of this May's election.
I'll second that.
A motion is second on the floor to approve the first reading of the ordinance canceling a portion of the May third, 2025 general election. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand.
I abstain from this.
You do have to abstain. Good, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Motion passes. Item nine on the agenda, consider taking any necessary action on a resolution approving a budget amendment number four to the 2024-2025 annual budget. Tim, is this you or Roxanne?
I can go ahead and cover it. So this is a kind of a Housekeeping Amendment for the capital improvement expenses for the airport. One of the things that we noticed that in the budget that was adopted, all of the expense was not approved or appropriated for the ramp grant that we received, and so this budget amendment increases the budget to allow for that, and that's all really it does. So in the budget amendment, it doesn't show any kind of revenue, because we did budget all the revenue, we just did not budget or appropriate the expenses.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain any action on item nine, referencing the budget amendment.
I make a motion that on staff's recommendation that we approve the resolution.
Second.
The motion is second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote on said motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Item ten, regular agenda, consider taking any necessary action for the approval of the Rockdale Fair Association request for hot funds for the 2024 Annual Rockdale Fair. Tim, would you provide us the explanation, explanation for the reason for this agenda item, please?
Yes, please. So this is for last year's fair, and the Rockdale Fair Association, it indicated that they turned a application in previously, but we did not have one on file. They came and made a presentation to council, they had a fantastic event, and you know, really did it probably better than any event as far as filling hotel rooms. They were asking for reimbursement for $27,000, and before we could make that reimbursement, I did need to have council's approval on this. And is, I think that Chris Moreland is gonna be here. Yeah.
Christie, sir.
So if you have any questions in regard to this, but everything is in order, they did tremendously in regard to the number of hotels, they almost sold out hotels here in the city, and their attendance was way up for past years, so I have no problem recommending awarding of this.
Counsel, if you reflect back to following the fair, Christie Moreland's here and gave a very detailed presentation of the hot funds, the way the rooms were filled, and so I'll consider any action on this agenda item.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the hot funds reimbursement in the amount of $27,000.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Item eleven, consider taking any necessary action on an agreement with the Rockdale Chamber Commerce for annual hotel occupancy tax funding and support of the Chamber Visitor Center. Tim?
Yeah, so this was on the agenda last time, but one of the things I wanted to mention is that in the past, the city has funded this through our hot funds, anywhere from twenty-seven, I think last year they may have had forty thousand, but there was never any kind of agreement, so I asked our city attorney to draw up an agreement that will actually represent the relationship between the city and the chamber in regard to this payment. By their nature, the activities that they undertake are tourism, much of it is tourism related, so it is eligible for hot fund receipt. We did budget $30,000 for this expense, which is what they are, what I'm recommending. They had asked for forty thousand, but we'd only budgeted $30,000 in, out of the hot funds for this, for this activity. And this is a major source of funding for the chamber, I mean, the work that they do. So I am asking council to consider this. I know there was some discussion regarding Wolf Park. We did have a really good meeting with Victoria and Lucita, they're both here to answer any questions that you may, might have, and that, and that will, we will proceed and try to work that out, but that's really kind of a separate issue from this particular funding agreement.
Yeah, and I'll just expand a little bit on what Tim said. We, myself and Tim did meet with Victoria and Lucita, I believe, last week or week prior. I thought it was a very fruitful meeting. There was some very good discussion around Wolf Park and the ownership, or possible shared ownership, or singular ownership with Wolf Park moving forward. Obviously, that was something very new to them, so in my opinion, I think we can get to a joint resolution on this. I feel confident that we can, but that decision will take more time and discussion. I would encourage council not to let that reflect on their decision for making this, for considering this agenda item tonight.
Well, people come to us for hot funds, they then come back and let us know how the event went, and how many hotel rooms and things along that line. Because what the chamber does is spread out over a twelve-month period of time, and it might be many events, do we get any kind of accumulative report that would tell us turnout we get any kind of accumulative report that would tell us turnout for each of those events, possible hotel stays that happened during that?
That's a great question.
And I would just say that this is not, we have our event funding budgeted, which when people apply and use the application and the guidelines that we put together, they would do that. Under the terms of this agreement, they are required to submit financial information quarterly and make an annual presentation, prepare and submit a presentation to the city for review and come in person and make that presentation.
So that, to me, is part of what I harp on when I say we need to control this. I think this is, you're coming to tell us good news, is what I assume. And I don't know all the time if the citizens of our, you know, we may hear it, we may see it. But thank you for all you do, but I would like to hear some of the details of what's happened this past year.
Yeah. If I can start by just saying that at the last council meeting, unfortunately, we were unable to attend because of a prior Chamber engagement. But I did write up a letter to the mayor, the city council, and city manager that unfortunately just didn't, you know, have time to be read. But essentially, what it says is, "The Chamber has historically," obviously, I have not been here the entire time, "but historically received hot funds to operate a visitor center, a physical location. This agreement proposed by the city manager kind of shifts our responsibilities towards a more digital visitor center and allowing us to establish a digital footprint for the city of Rockdale." I am very proud to say that throughout my time here at the Chamber, we went from getting about 20,000 engagements on social media to regularly getting the views of 75,000 people. And those numbers only go up when you're consistent online. Our website numbers are up, traffic is up, people are visiting our online platforms more frequently than they have in the past years. And so we figured it'd be an easy pivot to focus from just chamber-oriented activities to doing both chamber-oriented and promotional City of Rockdale tourism promotion.
And there are events that they do with the Christmas in downtown and the Christmas parade. Which parade was phenomenal. It was my first. The weather, I think, kind of hampered attendance at the event, unfortunately. But I know that you're sponsoring the upcoming movies in the park over downtown that will draw people downtown as well.
Well, and can I add, we're doing that as a partnership. So we're really focusing this year, too. And we tried to over the last few years, but we're really trying to focus on partnerships, cooperatives, like how do we get people involved together instead of just being one sponsored event? How do we incorporate more organizations? So this particular one is going to be sponsored with a K or previous behavior.
And the Rotary Club.
And I can say, as mayor, I am very confident and comfortable saying that, in my opinion, over the past six to eight months, the vision and the work that the Chamber's done as compared to many years prior is a refreshing change. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a pretty comprehensive calendar of events for 2025. If anybody's interested in that, I can provide a more detailed copy. But yeah, the idea was to, obviously, we are a membership-based organization, so we have to serve our members, and I believe that that is by form of education. So providing our members with information that they could use to actually help them build structure, grow their business, and networking opportunities, providing opportunities for people to gather and meet a professional in their industry or outside of their industry that they otherwise might not have met. And then the third component that I really believe is important is fostering a sense of community among our citizens. I don't think that the importance of a community is stressed in our modern-day society. And so if we can create opportunities for people to just gather, and you don't have to spend any money, you can just come out, enjoy a family-friendly movie or a family-friendly Christmas event with your neighbors, it only makes Rockdale a better place to live and raise a family.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for?
I do want to say thank you because I see you regularly, both of you, but especially because of our work schedules, I see you frequently at restaurants and places of other business, coffee shops, whatnot. And that's meaningful to me, and I'm sure it is to the majority of them.
I try. Thanks.
You know, the questions for Lucita or Victoria? Comments?
Concerns.
Do you have anything else to?
I just, there was one last paragraph to this letter that did not get read. I think it's kind of important because we really want to open up a dialogue if necessary.
That's fair. I'll just read it verbatim. "This evolution in our partnership aligns with our shared goal of boosting Rockdale's tourism presence, and I believe that allocating these funds towards advertising, marketing materials, website development, and other promotional efforts will significantly enhance our ability to attract visitors and showcase all Rockdale has to offer. That said, I do believe that some aspects of this agreement are open to interpretation. And before the Chamber can execute this agreement in good faith, I believe it is important that we all have a clear and shared understanding of the expectations surrounding this agreement. To that end, I would love to set aside time for a collaborative discussion between representatives of the Chamber, the city, and any interested council members to ensure we are all aligned on our vision, responsibilities, and expectations moving forward. Having open communication will allow us to maximize the impact of these funds and ensure that we are fully aligned on how to best support Rockdale's tourism efforts."
Thank you for that. Counsel, I'll now ask you the opportunity, I'll entertain any action on agenda item eleven in regards to the hotel occupancy funds.
I would think by that paragraph, we would need a workshop before we agree to this.
Would you say that again, please?
By that paragraph, I would think we would need a workshop with the Chamber before we agree to it, if they're not ready to execute it.
Well, so our concern is to make sure that our expectations are aligned. We just don't want an expectation to be provided that we just aren't able to meet, not because we don't want to, but we just can't. I think, again, this was written last month when we weren't here, but the part I really wanted to highlight was us talking together and making sure we know what you want, which is why I'm very pleased with our meetings with Tim and Moore, because we've really started discussing what does the city want from, not the Chamber itself, but from the visitor center and how we can help. So as long as, as long as we can keep those lines of communication open, we're okay with moving forward, but we just want to make sure that our expectation, that we're able to meet our expectations and vice versa.
Thank you. Counsel, any action you'd like to take on this item?
I think Councilman Walker makes a good point. I kind of, I would like to see some collaboration between us before we, you know, move further with this. I know that we've given you guys money in the past, and I'm not opposed to doing that. I don't think that we've worked very strongly together in the past, and that's something I think needs to change. And we need to find a way to work together more efficiently and effectively. Being said, I'm not opposed to approving these funds, but that comes with, you know, I would like to see some meetings between both sides and getting together and working through some things.
Is it, is it too preemptive to say, can we get something on the calendar? I want to make sure it doesn't get pushed off for three months, six months, nine months, when we might have some kind of change that we don't foresee.
Yes. So counsel, you have a couple of options with this agenda item. I think you can make a motion to table it again. The agenda item could die for lack of a motion, or it could receive a motion and pass or not pass based on council votes. So with that information and understanding what Chamber is asking for, and I understand what Council Member Starnes, Council Member Walker are requesting, I'm just laying out your options for you as council. And once again, I'll entertain action on this item.
If we were to approve this this evening, how soon would the money go to the Chamber? And if we don't, even if we just take this to next month, like, is that going to impact your day-to-day, your budgets, if a delay in this particular funding?
I think the agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, specifies the funds would be received by March 31st. We could definitely schedule something between now and then to sit down and collaborate. If you'd like to wait a little longer, that's also fine.
Of course, if it is tabled, that date would have to change.
Say again, Tim?
If that, if it's tabled, then we would have to, if we have that workshop to have that discussion, depending upon how it's handled, whether it's a full council meeting to have that workshop.
Or a special meeting.
Or a special meeting.
Correct.
Otherwise, it would have to be.
Which, I think during our meeting this morning, you discussed there may be the need for a special meeting for a different, separate reason.
For a budget.
So if council could jointly schedule with Lucita and Victoria prior to that day, I think hopefully we could come to some resolution and then maybe have that as an agenda item on that needed special meeting, which would most likely be this month. Is that correct, Tim?
Right now, it's the 10th. It would probably, today's the 10th. It's likely that we, it would be the first, first week of April before we have a special meeting. There's more work that has to be done by staff before we can have a budget workshop.
Counsel, understanding the options before you, I will entertain action.
And I think regardless, we would have to have, we would want to have that, just so there's clear understanding. And, you know.
Certainly. Yes, I agree with that.
I'll make a motion that we table this for further discussion.
And to get a workshop on the calendar.
And to schedule a meeting and workshop with the Chamber.
So we have a motion to table this request for hot funds by the Chamber of Commerce and to schedule a workshop. Councilmember Starnes, would you consider adding before next council meeting to that motion, please, sir?
Absolutely.
So with the agreement of Councilmember Starnes, he's adding with a workshop conducted prior to the next council meeting. Council, do you understand the motion on the floor? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I, I have no problem if this passes. I also, though, like to, especially with our friend from the Chamber, I like to operate under the presumption of good, and I would have no problem approving the funding tonight. So it's not that I don't understand and I'm not hearing, but I think we're going to get there. We're just kind of delaying it a little.
I, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So if we put it in the meeting notes that we have to schedule before the next city council meeting, who is going to, how do I contact to schedule that?
So contact Tim. And what I will do, once this motion either passes or fails, if this motion passes, I'm going to appoint three council members, if I may. Barbara?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to appoint three council members to attend that meeting jointly with the Chamber of Commerce and most likely myself and Tim. So counsel, with that understood, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to be one of those appointed if possible.
Duly heard. Any other discussion? Being none, entertain a vote on said motion, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to one. I'm going to appoint Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Melton, and who would like to be?
I met with them last week.
Your working nights?
Oh, days and nights.
Okay. So based on your schedule, would it be Councilmember Starnes better or?
I think Starnes can do it. I met with them last week, so I feel like I have some questions answered.
Okay. So those three council members are appointed. I'm going to ask counsel to work with Tim on making their schedules available, as well as Lucita and Victoria, please, making your schedules available where we can try to expediently get these questions answered and have this discussion and get to where we need to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And mayor, I will likely look for them to call that separate from the other meeting that you and I talked about.
Yes.
So it can happen sooner rather than later.
Okay. Very good. You're really challenging my parliamentary skills tonight.
You're great.
Think back to my old Rockdale FFA days, I tell you what. Anyhow, after that side note, item 12 on the agenda, discuss and consider possible action regarding contracting with the Mylon County Appraisal District for collection of ad valorem taxes for the next fiscal year. Tim?
So this is not on the agenda for final approval tonight. It's more informational on the direction that we're going. And if the council has no interest in pursuing that, then I will drop that. But we've had some issues with the property tax collections in Mylon County, and as a result, I've had a couple of meetings with all the other taxing entities in the county other than the county itself. And most of us are moving towards having the appraisal district do the property tax collections and distributions. And the reason for that was really twofold. And when we had this conversation with the county judge at a town hall meeting, there was a number of benefits. Number one, the appraisal district is run by the district director, who is a professional, educated, selected, and can be held accountable by their board. And so if there are continued problems, then that individual can be held accountable. Part of the issues that we have right now is that the problems that we've been having right now, it's handled by an elected official. And so the only way they can be held accountable is to the voters, but that won't happen for a number of years in the future, potentially, if that, if it were to continue. The other issue, the other problem, the other opportunity was to have people that are paying their property taxes, if they have issues and they go to the assessor-collector and they have questions, generally, they're referred to the appraisal district. And so they'll have to set up a separate meeting with the appraisal district, get that, get that resolved. Appraisal district has to communicate all that information back to the assessor-collector before they can finally make their payment. So if it was moved to the appraisal district, it would kind of be a one-stop shop, I think, more efficient for our taxpayers in the city. Now, at this point right now, when we had a meeting with the appraisal district a couple of weeks ago, the board did vote to go ahead and move in that direction, and they directed the director to go ahead and put together the cost of providing that service, all these taxing entities that had expressed interest. Once they have that, then we'll have to negotiate specific contract with each jurisdiction, including the city of Rockdale. And so this would be coming back to you actually for action. If there's, if you're okay with moving in that direction, then there's no action needed tonight. If you absolutely don't want to do that and just want to keep it where it's at, please tell me, and I won't waste any more time.
So did I just understand you to say, if council's okay with moving that in that direction, there's no action that's needed tonight?
That's correct.
And why is that?
I've already asked for the city to be considered, so they are including us in the calculation.
Okay.
To determine the cost. And if that is the case, then I will work with them to develop a contract to bring back to council for approval. So you're not, there's not a final approval. I'm saying, all I'm asking is if you don't want to move in that direction at all, or consider it, just tell me, and I will let them know that I would involve my name, our decision in Rockdale from that discussion.
So counsel, you understand that decision, potential decision that's ahead of you? If you don't, if you do not, if you choose not to voice opposition in regards to this agenda item that Tim's recommended, then he is going to proceed with?
And it doesn't mean absolutely that we will.
Okay.
Because in fact, they could come back and end the cost to provide that service.
Counsel, in the future, we'd have an opportunity to approve or not approve the potential agreement.
Yes. And there's not any, there wouldn't be any obligation to say, didn't voice our opinion before, so we have to go this direction.
Okay.
I'm not sold on it yet, but I would like to explore that out.
I felt recognized. Our Mylon County DA, Brian Price, is in the room. Brian, were you here in regards to this? Was there any input or no? Yes, no?
I mean, I can answer any questions.
Okay. So counsel, you have the, if you have any questions relative to this?
I can tell you the county is not going to be moving over the appraisal district collecting taxes, and that's solely because by statute, the county can't do so unless the elected tax assessor-collector consents to that. We had the town hall meetings, we had one in Cameron, one in Doorville, and one here in Rockdale. And the reason we had those was because we felt like that's the way things were going. And then when we had, you know, our county commissioner, our county court meeting for that, our tax assessor-collector seemed to indicate that she was not going to consent to the county moving over. And so then that kind of leads us to where we have no choice, and we still have to go with our collector taxes. But y'all are bound by that.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Counsel, any other discussion, or is any counsel in objection to giving Tim the authority to proceed on investigating this? I'll take your silence as a no?
No, naturally.
So with that, Tim, you are, shall proceed, sir. Thank you. Agenda item 13, consider taking any necessary action on a resolution authorizing submission for a grant application for 2025 funding from the Post Oaks Savannah Groundwater Conservation District and committing the local match for the grant. Gerald?
Well, he's making his way up here. I would like to recognize all of the effort that Gerald put into making this application. I know it's something that he's been working on for about the last at least six weeks.
It has been a while.
So, and it has, there's been some movement and shifting of things, and I think we're in a good place in that regard.
Good.
So it's the time of year again where we can put that application in. Our 2024 grant, we requested $350,000 and about $180,000 match, and Post Oaks Savannah came back and offered us $315,000 with a $213,000 match, and y'all approved that in April, I believe, of last year. This year, we're going to ask for $350,000 again, and we've set aside or actually spent already that we can do for our match, $178,000 for the city match. So that's what we'll be presenting to them. Shannon and I are going to try to put the final packet together tomorrow. The one that's in your packet was done very quickly last Tuesday and Wednesday morning to get it finished. But there's some things I've got to polish up in it, but the nuts and bolts of the request is what I just explained to you. The rest is just a lack of polishing. So that's our proposal as far as requesting that grant.
Thank you.
I would point out to council that of the city's match, we've already spent or committed the $105,000 for the well 11 repair that's going to be used, that is proposed to be used for match. And also, there was some evaluation of well eight. This is part of our match is the.
It's $128,000 of the, of the match has already been paid out.
And so all we have left is the $50,000 to replace meters?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions for Gerald or for Tim regarding this agenda item? I will entertain any action on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we issue a City of Rockdale resolution that allows the city manager to apply for the $350,000 water conservation grant with the matching expenditure of $178,570.
I'll second that.
So a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being none, a vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item 14, consider taking any necessary action for approval of the purchase not to exceed $135,000. And counsel, you have that information and additional handout for you for an aerator on the Texas Street Treatment Plant.
The unit that we have at Texas Street is a specialized unit where the water comes in the top, forced air is blown up through the bottom of the, of the aerator, and it gets air to all the elemental iron that's in the water and converts it to iron oxide. The unit that's there has been there for, I don't know, 10 to 15 years. I'm not sure exactly, but has worn out the fan and the holder for that. And we had to make some internal modifications to make sure that it did the job semi-satisfactorily for the last 18 months or so. And so last year, when I turned in the project to Post Oaks Savannah, that was in there and a new control cabinet for our water treatment plant at Mill Street. The cost that we got were very good for what work we did do, and there's been enough, there's enough left in that Post Oaks Savannah. So this is not coming out of city coffers. This is coming out of Post Oaks Savannah funds for this $135,000.
Very good. Thank you, Gerald. Counsel, any questions for Gerald? I'll entertain any action on agenda item 14.
I'll make a motion we purchase an aerator for the Texas Street Treatment Facility not to exceed $135,000.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote on said motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item 15, consider taking any necessary action to approve the $119,276 to rehabilitate well number eight.
Jim, would you turn off these lights? We have some pictures. That's not it.
I can see why I need to tell.
The well number eight was reconditioned in 2012. Hold on one second. Hold on a second. There you go. Was reconditioned 2012. So it's been about 12 years since anything was done to it. About 10 to 15 months ago, maybe about 10 months ago, let's say, we started getting some odor out of the well, and then we started getting some contaminants through there. And we tried to flush it. We tried to chlorinate it and get that out, but we weren't able to do that. So we had the well pulled. But this is what we did, got before we had it pulled. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
So naturally, we stopped running that water into our system.
How long has it been out of service for? How long has this well been now been out of service?
Probably 10 to 12 months in that neighborhood, first part of last year.
What did we determine that we were picking up? Is that sediment? Or what is that that we're picking up in that water?
I'm going to tell you this, and this is absolutely true. I've talked to Post Oaks Savannah, I've talked to Wyffsley, I've talked to JNS Wells, I've talked to KPA Engineering, KSC Engineering. And finally, I brought in a, an engineer, groundwater company out of the Austin area, and that's all they do. And I told him, I said, I'm sorry, I don't have an idea. He said, well, I wouldn't expect you to, because you could ask a thousand people and nobody's going to know what's causing this. We have some suppositions. The majority of the color is being caused by iron-eating bacteria, and it's just built up over the course of time, and it's coated the well from top to bottom, all the way to the bottom. And if, when we did a video of it, it was floating flakes of this iron-eating bacteria that's left. We, we think, once we get it all cleaned out, we're going to find one or two things. One, there's either a break in some of the screens, because when you test this, what you get is silica and silica dioxide, which is sand, very, very fine sand. So we could have a break in a screen and it's pulling in from the aquifer, or one of the other explanations, which I really like, but it's not really easy to prove, is that there's so much stoppage clogging of those screens that the pressure that it's putting on the aquifer to pull it in is actually just dragging in sand that it normally wouldn't do.
Is this a crezo aquifer?
Well, it goes down, it goes through that, but it terminates in the.
Selmspur?
Hooper.
Hooper, okay.
Yeah. So this is 400.
Multiple. Both from multiple aquifers?
Yes, but it ends, it terminates in the hooper and by 440 feet deep. And we're right on the edge of it. So what we, and everything we pulled out of it was worn terribly, and with silica going through, those are metal with high-pressure water, it's going to eat it up. And so we're going to have to put new material piping and pump. But what we're recommending to do right now is to just do the cleanup, the first part of the quote, which was $34,000 and some odd dollars. And they'll go in there and scrub the walls and the screens all the way to the bottom. Then they'll put a wafer in there with a pressure nozzle in there, and they'll spray it with high pressure to clean out all the material. And then they'll use jets to push everything to the surface and suck it out.
Use some kind of brush on the screen itself?
I'm sorry?
They use some kind of brush?
Yeah, so use a brush all the way to the bottom. And then after that, they'll go in there with high pressure, and then they'll chlorinate it. And then we'll take some samples. Once we pump it, we'll put a temporary pump down in the well and pump material out. And then after a week or so, we'll see if we still have the silicon, silicon dioxide in there. If we do, then we're probably going to lose a well. If we don't, then we can put the pumping material, pump, pump some other material back in there and salvage this well.
When you say lose the well, lose the ability to pump out of the well as its equipment exists?
Means we would have to dig a new well in another location.
Yeah. We're still hoping to salvage it, but until we clean it and know for sure.
And what, do we know what we think our odds are for success? Has this, I only see one bid here, so that's my next question, why we only have one proposal?
Well, it is a by-board bid, so only one is required for that. And Wyssinger is who we've used for decades here in Rockdale. But just to try to keep them honest, I did get another quote. And is it not in there? I thought it was. Because I gave both of them. But this is the second quote from JNS Water Wells out of Belleville. And they quoted $112,960 with, which is $7,000 less than Wyssinger. Wyssinger's much larger and very competent. So I asked them, this is the single bid to do both parts, they gave me to do both parts of it. I asked them to split it out, and they split it out evenly. And so for just the cleaning, Wyssinger has $34,000 and JNS has $58,000. So I don't know why they split it that way, but.
So what I'm hearing you say, I think, is that although two quotes weren't required, which I disagree with that, I think we should always get more than one quote, because we're spending our citizens' money. We should do our due diligence. But the one quote was much higher than the other one, and Wyssinger, I understand Wyssinger is a very reputable company, and I agree with that. And, but the other quote was higher? Is that correct? Because the way you said kind of confused me.
Wyssinger was $119,000, I believe, and they're $112,000.
Okay. But because of your past work history with Wyssinger, you think this would be the right decision?
And also, the, the first stage that we may do and then not proceed with the second part of it, Wyssinger was, cost was $34,000 compared to $58,000 from the other company.
That's correct.
And I'm not questioning your judgment. Don't, don't think that. I'm just asking the questions.
I just respect you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So I guess.
Go ahead, Gerald.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I think we, you know, it kind of threw me back a little bit when you said not to, to use buyboards, so I think that's something we need to talk about at another time. But basically, we're talking about lower cost for the $34,000 versus, and I'm not sure the other company will do the other one for the $58,000 versus the $84,000. But I don't tell them how to bid or how to break them down, but they are apples-to-apples quotes.
Okay.
And just for council aware, if, if we do the cleaning, the $34,000, and it doesn't work, and we have to do a new well, Gerald, that runs about over?
Number I'm giving is at least a million.
That's accurate.
And so we didn't want to at least try to see if we could be successful.
Timeline for this, if it's approved?
I have not talked to BJ at Wisswassinger, but he was off, he offered to come up here today, but I think we could probably get it done in the next three, three weeks.
Okay. And timeline on whether we know we reached success or not? Is that within that three-week time period, or after testing, or?
It'd be after testing. You know, if it takes them three weeks to get it done, then I'm saying another three weeks after that to, to know where we stand, because we're going to have to pump a good bit of water through there to get, to back to what would be considered normal. But once we, once we get it cleaned out, we'll also do a re-video of the, of the well from top to bottom. We have a video going all the way down to 443 feet, so we'll do that again once it's cleaned. But it's not going to be held up by anything except by, except by Wisswassinger's schedule.
Council, Gerald's probably tired of me asking him questions, John.
No, go ahead.
I have a question, actually.
Okay.
Um, so let's say this treatment doesn't work, is there other options, or is it like tense that we would lose the well? Is there other options if this one doesn't work as far as treatment for the rehab?
I, I haven't gone and looked at it. If the situation, once we get it cleaned out, get rid of all the iron-eating bacteria and all the silvers are sealed, I mean, there are, there are maybe other options, like putting a small filter as it comes out of there that can be, can take out some of the sand, but that's just a maybe.
One of the other issues is this, this well is permitted at how many gallons per minute?
800.
800 gallons a minute. Currently, we have a.
500 gallon.
500 gallon a minute pump in there. You know, as we've been talking about potential industrial prospects and the need for additional water, if we are successful, we would, we'd want to increase the size of the, of the pump and motor and that we put in, that we put back in if it's successful.
But there is one caveat to that, is that that well has no, it has a gallon-per-minute rate that we can pump out of it, but it has no yearly volume. So that well only has the ability to make what the other two total is. So it's not a three-well composite. It's a two-well composite, and if you turn this one off, you can use the other well to make that same amount of water. So we don't gain any total capacity by having that well running 800 gallons a minute to the total.
Council, any other questions?
Thank you. You're wealth of information. Thank you, Gerald.
Yes, yes, thank you, Gerald. Council, entertain any action on agenda item 15.
I move that we approve line item 15 as read.
A motion on the floor is our second. A motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being none, we'll vote on said motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item 16. Consider taking any necessary action. Change order number one, to contract with Esco for downtown improvements. Gerald?
Two things are on this change order. The first one is the wage rate has changed that is mandatory for the contractor to pay, and this small part of it, and I didn't bring my breakdown of it, but.
$1,140.
1,100?
$1,140.
$1,140. It's just the difference in what was the max, the minimum that could be paid and the maximum. So that's the part. The rest of it is when we decided that we wanted to put lights in there and include it in the project because there was additional funds available, we went to KSA, and then they went to Encore and coordinated what needed to be done so that it met all Encore specifications, and one of them is a pull box at each, at each lot, so they can bring the, they put a conduit in there, but not the pull box. This is the labor involved in putting those pull boxes in. Encore's going to furnish the pull boxes, and Esco's going to install them as part of the concrete work when they do it. So that's the difference in the.
And this would not change our match requirement, is that correct?
Does not change our match, any out-of-pocket for the city.
We, the, this contract that was awarded did not fully expand the CBG funds that we were awarded, so this would use up part of that additional funding.
Good. Thank you. Council, any questions? I'll entertain action on agenda item 16.
I'll make the motion to approve change order number one on the downtown revitalization, sidewalk reconstruction.
A motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being none, we'll, being none, we'll vote. All in favor of said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item 17. Consider taking any necessary action on an application from the Rockdale Food Mart and Kitchen for Assigned Variants at 1300 West Cameron Avenue. And Mr. Hussein was here earlier. This is the agenda item that he was speaking in reference to. Ben?
So this, the backstory, as, as the gentleman said earlier, a permit was not pulled, so the staff could not make the food mart owners aware that there is an ordinance against signs being above the roof line. This is slightly above the roof line, and so that's why they're bringing this variance request before you. They need a permit first, but the issue is staff cannot issue a permit for a sign that does not meet your codes. And so either one or two things have to happen. They have to get this variance request, and then staff will give them a permit, or they will have to move the sign down, and then staff will give them a permit, or they can remove the sign altogether. That is the three options they have. I will tell you that the city of Rockdale has ordinances regarding the process of approving these variances as well. They reflect the local government code. One of those requirements to approve a variance request is the hardship is not supposed to be self-created. And with them installing the sign themselves against the city ordinance, that would be defined as a self-created hardship. With that, I can fill any questions.
So you have to consider it from the standpoint of, if they were asking for this variance, the sign was not up, and they're asking for that variance, would it be considered at that point? So what he's saying is the fact that they've already installed the sign, you can't take that as part of the consideration in your decision.
How far above the roof line is it, Ben?
It would maybe like a foot. It's close, but.
Is it, is it the, the top?
The top of it is just above. So it looks, if you go outside, it looks like it's way above the roof line, but what it is, it's, it's on an awning, the awning slopes up, and then there's the roof line. It is slightly above that roof line, that it would have to come down.
There's no other place to put that sign. How could you even come, how could it come down any?
That would not be for me to decide. I can tell you, they have an existing, for lack of better terms, it's a pole sign that the old Sunnies used to use. It's a blank canvas now. I know this sign is a very nice-looking sign. It could be removed, and they could use that instead, or they could get a smaller version of this sign to move it down. But the size of the sign is just above the roof line. And I will tell you, in the past, there was a request similar to this that council did approve for another gentleman that was slightly above the roof line. He met the same criteria.
So what staff recommendation on this?
Staff has to recommend against this because of the ordinance that the city council adopted, and the local government code will not allow for this to be approved to their conditions.
What was your investment in the sign?
$13,000.
$13,000?
I'd like to see it, I mean, open dialogue, of course, but I believe Mr. Hussein has invested in quite a few businesses in our town, and I appreciate that, and I hope that we can come to a compromise collectively, just to be welcoming and good neighbors.
Do you have, have you already determined a location that you could successfully move it and use this sign?
No, we don't.
Not at this time?
It's a great-looking sign, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it was off of that.
I'm kind of with Sme in that, lived here 13 years, and that building has always seemingly been empty or problematic or unattractive, and we do want fried chicken back.
I didn't realize there was chicken in there. I'm not in there a few, oh, there will be. Okay, I was like, I missed it. I have stopped by there a few times. It's a very nice, clean store with great clients.
It's on their property. It's by the gas pumps that they do not use no longer.
Ben, do you recall, I know there was a different council that was seated at that time, when the variance request for the other business out on Highway 77 was granted for a similar situation. Do you recall a discussion and why council chose to approve that variance as opposed to, that's a tough question, so.
No, it was Fred's Nail Shop.
Okay.
It was the one that got it. It was a similar discussion, that it was a building that was being remodeled, and he did a really nice job with the aesthetic of it. And so they, since he didn't, the way his roof is designed, it was either, it has to be above the roof line, or it's going to have to be a pole sign, and so council chose that they would allow him to keep that on the roof.
I will not be denied this variance request. I'll let y'all make a motion, but.
I'd like to see us grant the variance. Oh, oh, sorry, yes. I thought we were still having discussion. Okay. I move that we grant the variance for this property. Do I need to say for 1300 West Cameron Avenue?
I'll second that.
Uh, council, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the variance request for the property at 1300 West Cameron Avenue regarding the mount, where the current mount of the sign. Is there any discussion?
Discussions would be hopefully lesson learned, because is there, like, was there a fee associated with when you apply for stuff like this?
So council, in their fee schedule, adopts permit fees, of course, but in that, there is a double, the permit fee for an after-the-fact permit, so they will be paying a double, essentially two signs, but they get one for it.
So if this motion is approved, they still have to pay a permit fee, and so, I don't know if penalty's the right word, but penalty for failing to apply for the proper permit at the time prior to installation, they have to pay a double fee?
Right.[1686.77]